I signed in for it and then, I mean, it was almost a whole week before somebody got back to me. I mean, if you were looking, if I didn't reach out to you, I don't know if they would have. So, I just, it was fine, but I was like, interesting, because there's something left to be had there, because it said, if you want that, but it didn't give me any area to go back into and say, this is kind of what I was looking for, or add an additional contact, or it was still lacking.
You think he is?
Yeah, and then on that, on that website, it doesn't calculate, it does not take anything, it just gives you, in total, you pay for it. Then she called me back.
Hey Cheryl.
Shipping, it's not in.
Cheryl.
There is no note about shipping on that website.
Was Michelle Carrico coming?
And I, and I.
Was Michelle Carrico coming?
And I.
I think this has to be on the.
I said, well. And I said. Yeah, because it has to say. And I said, if my thinking is, you know, it's.
Cause there's nothing in the packet.
Especially if you use a credit card and pay here.
The, the.
It's just, you may get the document, you may get the document.
For the addition.
Yeah, cause when you pay, you're done.
Yeah, this is it.
This is it.
It's just, maybe, yeah, just interesting now.
That's right. Call order council meeting for March twenty second, if everyone would stand for the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is your flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and ever and ever.
Dear Lord, let this into the body, guided tonight, and future as well, amen.
Can we have roll call?
President Salters.
Here.
Vice President Grove.
Here.
Councilman Gornau.
Present.
Councilman Lau.
Here.
Councilman McNeese.
Here.
Councilman Ravallette.
Here.
And Councilman Stengel.
Here.
Mary Okum.
Here.
Adoption of the agenda?
Uh, make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second. Got a motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to adopt the agenda as presented. Question.
Councilman Gornau.
Yes.
Councilman Lau.
Yes.
Councilman McNeese.
Yes.
Councilman Ravallette.
Yes.
And Councilman Stengel.
Yeah.
And by vote of seven zero, that is approved, with approval of the Minister of the March eighth minutes.
Make a motion to approve the March eighth minutes.
Second. Motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to approve the March eighth minutes as presented.
Councilman Gornau.
Yes.
Councilman Lau.
Yes.
Councilman McNeese.
Yes.
Councilman Ravallette.
Yes.
And Councilman Stengel.
Yeah.
And by a vote of seven zero, those are approved. Petitions, memorials, or mockups?
I have something under memorials. Uh, I just wanna mention that, uh, we lost a former business person, Steve Nesbit. Um, Steve was a good friend of mine, uh, but, uh, as his relates to the city of Vincennes, Beer House Boulevard wouldn't be in place if not for him and some other owners donating, uh, the land for the right of way for there. So, uh, if you can, think about Linda tonight, if you would do so.
Anyone else? If not, we'll go to committee chair reports.
Yes, the UEA met last week. Um, we promised a total of twenty-six thousand dollars to two business owners, three homeowners, uh, one nonprofit organization. Uh, one nonprofit organization, we tabled till next month. They're doing a, almost a two million dollar restoration. Um, and one applicant did not qualify. And also, there is a public safety committee meeting here at City Hall, uh, twenty-fourth this month at six-thirty.
Uh, solid waste met, uh, last week. Uh, the rate increase that was talked about was finally passed through unanimously. Um, I know we talked about that for a couple of months. Uh, Michelle was here. Approval from all of our different boards, and then we got, you know, word that Bicknell, they, they approved it as well. She finally got over there. So, every county, um, elected body had approved this, so that's a very positive notion. That'll lead us to start moving forward with the ability to expand services. So, that's the goal in the end, and, uh, that means good things for the city of Vincennes, so we're looking forward to that.
RDC met, uh, on Thursday, last Thursday. Um, really just a continuation of what we've been doing. Uh, more importantly there, I think, uh, Board President Tim Smith will be here to give the annual report, I believe, next.
At our next council meeting, am I right about that?
Yeah, it's the next council meeting. He will be here to give the full report, so I'll let him do that. So.
Okay, if there's no other reports, go to report to city officers. Three more public comment. No public comment. We're gonna open business. First up is business updates.
All right, uh, in the discussion with the businesses, uh, our local businesses, uh, this week, uh, things seem to be going really, really well. One of the nice things too is the, uh, nice weather, uh, that we've had, and, um, it's really encouraged people to go out. And, um, a lot of our places do accommodate more outdoor space, um, and, uh, that's a great thing. So, people are feeling more comfortable, obviously with the news of us and our COVID state with our numbers being so low, that's really helping, uh, too. So, our businesses are a very great spot. This also kinda ties in with our giveaway that's now in week six, and we're really doing a great job. When you look at the analytics and the numbers, uh, our key goal not only was to help, uh, introduce money into some of our local businesses, but the key thing there was to draw interest to our local businesses, and I think that we've done that. Uh, so this has been a huge success, and I can't thank Councilman Ravallette enough, uh, for the work that he put into this, uh, because it really has, uh, been a shot in the arm, specifically in that first quarter that we wanted to see. So, um, this has been extremely successful. Uh, we're gonna probably, uh, there's an idea that we're kinda kicking around. Uh, Councilman McNeese, um, sent me, was it Santa Clara or Santa, it was Santa Clara. Uh, they did kind of a, um, a hundred dollar gift card for visitors to come in, and you had to kinda prove that you stayed in town, uh, for a couple of days. I'm still kinda looking at their website and how they set that up, and it might be something that we look into, see if we can kind of accommodate that to bring people into the city of Vincennes, probably like post rendezvous time, if we could figure something out. Uh, I'm still looking into that, and I know Councilman McNeese is looking into that. But i- it's an interesting way to try to bring people in. Obviously, we get towards the summer, um, obviously with the numbers, the way that they're going, the trend to move that direction, what we want people to come back to the city, we want people to visit Vincennes. So, we might look into something like that, but that's just kind of an idea at this point. And I think we can really cater it to, um, the businesses that are here in Vincennes and encourage people to come here, because there's a lot of things to do here in the city of Vincennes. So, when it comes to business, business is booming here in Vincennes, and that's a great thing.
Okay, next up is county metrics update.
Uh, our county metric numbers are absolutely fantastic. Um, and I know I've talked with the mayor about this numerous times. I've, we're at that point, like, I don't know how much lower we can get as we're still testing people. When you look at our positivity, our seven day positivity rate was one point six eight. Uh, that's extremely low, and then our cases per a hundred thousand are at twenty-one. So, that's amazing. Uh, we look at our active cases right now today is twelve, and we've been hovering right around that number where it's, you know, kinda mid-single digits to low double digits. That's absolutely fantastic. I think on our last couple of weekly updates, we've been under ten in cases that we've seen throughout the week, and we've had more cases, zero new cases daily than we've had cases a day, which is absolutely fantastic. Today, we had zero new cases, so things are really, really going well. This is our fourth week in blue. We're trending to another week in blue. Um, and the hospital even announced today that they vaccinated seventeen thousand people. I mean, that's, that's amazing. And so, things are really going well here in Vincennes and Knox County. I mean, we're kind of a leader in that vaccination area, which is great news. Um, and then the governor will be giving an address. He usually does it on Wednesday. He will be giving an address tomorrow night at, well, early evening at five-thirty. Um, so, we expect to get some more updates there, um, as we move forward with dealing with COVID. So, that is where we're at today.
Good. We will move on to new business. First up is City of Vincennes, DNR Police Station Window Rehab Two Project. It says SIDC, Michelle Carrico. I assume that's just for information. I don't know why it's.
Um, that is on there because this is our first draw for that grant, and in order to, uh, submit that to the state for repayment, it has to be in the minutes that the city council has approved the claim. So, it's probably in the docket.
It's in the docket.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it just needs to be in the minutes that you guys approve the claim separately to, for Michelle's purposes, for submission to the grant.
So, do we need to approve that claim separately?
Why don't we just do it, just to be, just to be safe, let's do it and get it in the minutes.
Do you wanna, do you wanna do it right now?
Yeah, it's, uh.
So, we just need to make a motion to approve the claim right now, or do we need to wait till the?
What's in your packet?
It's right, it's.
It's on page seven.
It's ordinance six twenty twenty-one, is that right?
Well, that's, that's the.
That's the, that's the establishing the fund.
The claim is for Momni, in the amount of twenty-three thousand, three ninety-six, twenty-five.
Claim thirty-zero, six one.
For the grant portion, and then twenty-three, three ninety-six, twenty-five for our portion. So, a total of forty, forty-six, seven ninety-two, fifty.
So, do we need to do that separately, so it's in the minutes?
Do it.
Or is it okay when we do it in claims as a whole?
The claims will be in the minutes.
So, I mean, i- does that count for us then?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
That works for me.
Then we'll move on to ordinance six twenty twenty-one, establishing fund, police restoration windows number two, additional into edit and transferring edit into zero nine zero eight.
All right, make a motion, uh, to approve ordinance six twenty twenty-one.
Second. Motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to read ordinance six twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance six twenty twenty-one, in ordinance of the common council of the city of Vincennes, establishing a fund for the city of Vincennes, uh, police station window rehab phase two grant, allocating city match for the grant from edit funds and an additional appropriation, uh, containing sections one through six, and requesting, uh, appropriation and transfer of seventy-one thousand dollars.
And basically, this is probably like we did the first time we had the grant for the windows, that we had to set up the funds and the transfers, and this just takes care of all that.
It's been a while since we did that one. Did we do one last year, or was it two years ago?
Two years, it's been two years.
It's been two, all right. That's what I thought.
Any other discussion? Question.
Councilman Gornau.
Yes.
Councilman Grove.
Yes.
Councilman Lau.
Yes.
Councilman McNeese.
Yes.
Councilman Ravallette.
Yes.
President Salters.
Yes.
Councilman Stengel.
Yes.
First reading of ordinance six twenty twenty-one passes by vote of seven to zero. We don't need to do any more readings? Can this claim be paid if that's not set up yet?
I think, well, we can go ahead and suspend the rules. It doesn't, I mean, everything's.
I mean, cause basically what we're doing is we're just setting up the, the fund to do this. We're setting up the account for this to be able to do, so.
We're setting up the fund for the grant.
All right. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, make a motion for second reading on ordinance six twenty twenty-one.
I'll second.
Motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to have second reading of ordinance six twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance six twenty twenty-one, ordinance of the common council of the city of Vincennes, establishing a fund for the city of Vincennes Police Station Window Rehab Phase Two Grant, allocating city match for the grant from edit and an additional appropriation for those funds. Sections one through six.
Okay, discussion. Question.
Councilman Gornau.
Yeah, yes.
Vice President Grove.
Yes.
Councilman Lau.
Yes.
Councilman McNeese.
Yes.
Councilman Ravallette.
Yes.
President Salters.
Yes.
Councilman Stengel.
Yes.
Second reading passes by vote of seven to zero.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to suspend the rules and have the third and final reading on ordinance six twenty twenty-one.
Second. Got a motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to suspend the rules and have the third reading of ordinance six twenty twenty-one.
Technically, you vote on the motion to suspend rules, and then you vote on the ordinance, cause in theory, you could lose the request to suspend.
Okay, so this is.
So, I just need to make a motion to suspend, not suspend, and have the third reading, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so, make a motion to suspend the rules, so we can have the third reading of ordinance six twenty twenty-one.
Councilman, oh, sorry. Councilman Gornau.
Just trying to make things simple.
Vice President Grove.
Yes.
Councilman Lau.
Yes.
Councilman McNeese.
Yes.
Councilman Ravallette.
Yes.
President Salters.
Yes.
And Councilman Stengel.
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, the rules will be suspended.
Now, I will make a motion for a third and final reading of ordinance six twenty twenty-one.
I'll second.
Got a motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove to have third and final reading of ordinance six twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance six twenty twenty-one, in ordinance of the common council of the city of Vincennes, establishing a fund for the city of Vincennes Police Station Window Rehab Phase Two Grant, allocating city match for that grant from edit funds and an additional appropriation for those funds. Sections one through six.
Discussion. Question.
Councilman Gornau.
Yes.
Vice President Grove.
Yes.
Councilman Lau.
Yes.
Councilman McNeese.
Yes.
Councilman Ravallette.
Yes.
President Salters.
Yes.
And Councilman Stengel.
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, third and final reading of ordinance six twenty twenty-one passes. Next up is ordinance updates. City Inspector Brad Snyder.
All right, I've asked Brad to come. He's given us an email specifically about some of the updates he wanted to see. I wanted him to basically give us an explanation real quick if we have questions to go, and then, uh, once we're okay with it, then we'll send it off, so he can get it in ordinance form, and we can update it at our next meeting.
Okay, I'm, I'm wanting to have the exterior disconnects to houses when Duke comes in and disconnects the power from the house. Uh, we've had a few fires here recently that I've listened to on the scanner, and I've heard central dispatch page and say that Duke's got an ETA of thirty minutes, forty-five minutes. As you may or may not know, you know, a fire doubles in size every thirty seconds. So, if your fire department pulls up and can throw that disconnect, they can go right to fighting without fear of somebody getting electrocuted. That's one of the main reasons I'm putting this in. I've talked to one of our residential electricians here in town, two of our master electricians. Um, they feel that this is a great idea. The only thing was that last paragraph there in D, you know, if, um, say somebody's just got a lug loose that needs to be tightened, or a main breaker that needs to be replaced, we don't wanna make them spend eighteen hundred, two thousand dollars to change the whole system. So, we'll have the inspector's office will have the right to deal with the homeowner, deal with the electrician, and we can make that call, whether we're gonna enforce it. But I believe all new buildings, all services that are gonna be moved to a different part of the house because of a room addition or anything, needs to have this exterior disconnect put on them.
Brad, uh, you, you mentioned price. How much, how much additional cost will this, uh, have to the homeowner?
If the riser is good, um, everything down to the box, you know, they have to do a reroute of the ground on it. Um, you're probably gonna look somewhere just to put the disconnect only on it, you know, four or five hundred dollars on an older house. Um, a lot of the houses in Vincennes right now has still got sixty amps in it. They need to be upgraded to a hundred or two hundred amps.
I agree with that.
So, if we, you know, if the house sells, we're gonna have to put a disconnect on it, because we're gonna have to upgrade to a hundred or two hundred amp.
And that's something the state recommends to, that.
The state does not require you to do this right now. Um, I hear they're working on it, but I also talked to a couple of insurance agents on this. If you have a claim on your house, and this is in my city ordinance, the insurance company has to kick in to help pay for it, if it's in the ordinance. When we went through the storms here the last time, we had a few of them that the insurance company called and questioned me. Do you have this in a city ordinance? No, we didn't. So, they didn't help the people that got damaged in the storm, that. I talked to former inspector Phil Cooper. He told me that he always recommended to the electricians to put them on, but he didn't have the power to enforce it, that they put them on, and that's what I'm doing now. Most all of them put them on because they know the safety factor of it, so.
Brad, I'm just unfamiliar, I mean, I'm, I know what a disconnect is, don't get me wrong. How does the security work on that, so an individual couldn't shut off the electricity in somebody's house?
That's a good question. I mean, it does have a lock on it that you could put on it, and granted, the fire department would have the tools to cut that lock off of it. So.
Okay.
Uh, most of them, if you go around town, that's got disconnects on them right now, they're unlocked.
Sure.
But you could put a small padlock on it, and like I say, the fire department's gonna have the equipment to cut it off right away. It's better than waiting. Duke's protocol right now, you have to live within thirty miles of your home base. So, you're talking south of Sullivan, it's gonna take them thirty minutes to get to town, or more, and then to get to the job site.
I agree. There's no doubt the safety that's out there for the fire department, and eventually with maybe putting out the fire quicker.
Yes.
You know, too. Um, I do worry about the security that comes with that. I mean, if somebody wanted to be a bad guy, they could shut off your electricity pretty quick.
Yeah, they could. And like I say, it's, it's got a place on it where you could put a padlock on it if you wanted to, but, you know, the padlock's just gonna keep the good guys out.
Brad, one of the things I do appreciate too is the, all the ordinance changes that you've brought to us. Um, it always looks for the safety of the citizens, but then your willingness to be flexible and be able to work with the citizens, which sometimes that's getting lost in some of our positions. So, I do appreciate that, hey, you're gonna be willing to work with these people to make sure that you, maybe a cost gets too high, but you're gonna figure something out, and you're gonna work something through, so.
Right.
Um, I always do appreciate that you make sure that that's one of the key things that you do focus on, but you're right, it is something that we need to look at, something that, um, we need to improve as we move along, because this will not only be better for our citizens, but for our fire crews as they have to work with this as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. We'll just get those updates to, uh, Raleigh again, and we'll get that on our next agenda to update that.
I haven't looked at it yet. I got some questions about it.
Okay.
Next is voting systems, County Clerk David Shelton.
All right, I'm invited our county clerk here to come discuss, uh, basically voting centers. Uh, at their last meeting of the Knox County Election Board, they made a motion to move towards e-poll books, and he might explain that a little bit, but this is really going to, uh, simplify kind of the voting experience. Um, things will be able to move quicker, um, and it'll be safer and more secure as we move on. So, um, it's a big step for Knox County to be able to do this. We're one of the few counties that's kinda left on to be able to do this, but then this leads us into the bigger conversation of voting centers. So, I've invited him to come to talk to us. Now, the thing is, he doesn't need our approval to be able to do this, but he's gonna go to every different government entity and be able to explain this, because we all wanna be on board and on the same page. Uh, because in the end, we need to be able to explain this to the citizens, understand it, um, so we can encourage people to get out there and vote as well. So, take away.
All right, well, I forwarded an email to you and asked you to forward it to the rest of your council and the mayor and everything. Um, that's my initial plan. Any, any vote center is a living, breathing thing that can and will change over time during, you know, due to demand, voter turnout, the size of the election, the size of the ballot. So, whatever we come up with for the first year, doesn't mean it's gonna be the same as, as the next year. Many counties have submitted their initial vote center plan, and they've amended it a half dozen times already. So, you know, I'm here, part of community outreach, uh, by sending that information out to you earlier, I've already had some feedback, and I'm already willing to change my initial plan that's not set in stone, uh, to the tune of adding another vote center in Vincennes. Um, it's easy to add or subtract as need, uh, demands. So, the initial plan that I'm gonna be proposing to the county election board would be four vote centers in the Vincennes area. Highland Wood Center, the Eagles Lodge, Greg Park Shelter House, and then the fourth one would be the Sally Port, where we've done the yearly voting last year. Those locations all have adequate parking, accessibilities addressed, and that's what we're going for. Uh, per state law, if a county would to be going to, would go to vote centers, you're required to have one vote center for every ten thousand registered voters. We currently have just under twenty-five thousand, so if you really wanted to go small, we could get by with only three, but I wanna make it accessible to everybody. I wanna keep a vote center in every incorporated town, several in Vincennes. Uh, one that's not incorporated, Freelandville, they're kinda off the beaten path up there, but they have a, about a seventy percent voter turnout up there. So, I just wanna make it accept, more accessible for them there. Uh, some steps that I've taken to make sure everybody is able to get to the polls. I know we have several, uh, high rises and, uh, you know, complexes, specifically with the Vincennes Housing Authority. Uh, last year, with the pandemic, we had to move our polling locations from the French Town Towers. Worked, uh, worked well with Executive Director Linda Frederick, and her and her staff provided transportation for her residents during the early voting period, the twenty-eight day early voting period. Uh, she will submit to me a letter and writing of support that they will continue that practice. I've also reached out to Van Gogh. They're double checking with NDOT, because they're partially funded by NDOT, but he believes he can commit two Van Gogh buses on election days, each and every election, to help the people get to the polls and new voting locations. Um. I'm, I'm here for any kind of questions you may have. I'd like to have your feedback, uh.
And early, early voting basically would be set up the same?
Absolutely. It's gonna be at the Sally Port again, twenty-eight days. Uh, also with the vote center system, in addition to the one location, on the two Saturdays prior to an election, we have to have two satellite locations opened up. And in my proposal, we will have Monroe City, the Blue Jean Center, those two Saturdays before the election, and then Bicknell at the Wilson Center, part of the Knox County Housing Authority, uh, complex. And I've already been in touch with both of those entities, and they're committing to letting us use those facilities, not only on election day, but those two early Saturdays as well.
Yeah, and one of the things too, Councilman Lau was at the e-poll book, uh, meeting with me, and we talked about, uh, security, because that's obviously a hot topic when you talk about voting security. And they walk through and explain how these identify people immediately if someone was trying to vote twice, or two different ballots were sent in, like, I mean, it's an immediate system that pops up and shows you, hey, there was a vote cast here by this person, but, you know, now they're trying to vote here. So, the system in place, well, sometimes people think technology, sometimes people get a little scared, but this technology is very secure. It identifies things immediately. Um, you have whatever identification you would be using that the state of Indiana allows, scans it, and then boom, your information pops up. It brings up the people that you'd be able to vote for, specifically in your district or your area, um, and you get to go vote. Um, it was simple, easy, quick, um, especially from the demonstration that we were shown, and, um, we were quite impressed. And it's gonna save a lot of time on your end.
It's gonna save a lot of time either, both with the pre-election work and post-election work, and at the polls. Uh, how many of you voted early last year at Sally Port or voted early that way? So, we take your ID, we enter your information in, and then we have to wait for the printer to kick on and print out a one-page document that you sign. That's technically an absentee ballot application. With the e-poll books, uh, none of that is needed. You simply put your driver's license face down in a cradle of the poll pad, which is basically an iPad. It scans the barcode, brings your information up, and then you sign electronically. Uh, that also, uh, is the same thing as your application to vote early. So, it eliminates, well, last year, we probably spent well over a thousand dollars just on toner and paper and such to do the early voting process. The e-poll books also eliminates a, uh, human error factor as well. Last year, we did have one gentleman attempt to vote three times. He was successful in voting twice, because the poll clerk didn't notice that the paper poll books was marked that he'd already voted. It was a simple human error on the poll clerk's work, uh, part, but, uh, he was able to vote twice last year.
So, the e-poll books, uh, is this a precursor to like early voting mobily? So, I, like, it bring a bus to the J.C.'s or Walmart to the world and, and be able to do that? Is this a step in that direction?
It would help, it would certainly enable something like that, uh, something like that's not necessarily in the works right now, but I could see it happening in the very future. Uh, some of my fellow clerks are actually exploring those options, making trips to other states where they have mobile voting centers to, uh, look at that and see the feasibility and what kind of grant opportunities may be available for that.
Poll book would eliminate any of that doubling ups kinda thing, so more opportunity.
And, and when you talk about four voting centers, in the city of Vincennes, you could vote at any of those four voting centers. So, one of the biggest questions I know that you get, or any of us get, is where do I go vote on election day?
It is.
We could give the four locations, and it doesn't matter. You scan, you'd scan your ID, and you'd just vote at that location, and then it would mark that you voted, and you're good to go.
And it's not just the four locations in Vincennes. If you have a resident of Vincennes that, say, works at Toyota, they could stop off in Decker on the way to or from work and vote. Uh, all the machines will be programmed just like they are for the early voting. All ballot types are on the machine. Uh, when the person, you know, signs in with the e-poll book, a little receipt is printed up that gives a. All ballot types are on the machine. Uh, when the person, you know, signs in with the e-poll book, a little receipt is printed up that gives a voter's name and what precinct they need to, what ballot from what precinct they need is printed up, so that eliminates that issue as well. So, you know, we have a lot of people that work out of the county. And we'll have vote centers located on every highway in and out of, of the county. You know, the first town you come to, there's gonna be a vote center there for you.
So is this, if you do the e-poll books, you have to do the voting centers too, or?
No, it's, it's the other way around. E-poll books is just, uh, it's by itself. We can do that and not do vote centers, but to do vote centers, you have to have e-poll books.
And if you do vote centers, is it countywide from day one, or is it, do you start with the city and then grow from there?
We would, we would do it countywide. And to be honest with you, I'm, I'm willing to make it an unofficial referendum vote on my ability. If you don't like them, vote, get somebody to run against me and vote me out of office and you can go back to precinct level voting the next year. But I intend to have this set up for twenty-twenty-two primary.
Uh, outreach for this, because I know this is a direction that you're, uh, wanting to move, and I know your board wants to move in this direction as well. Um, we've got, what, about a year and a half, maybe less, uh, before next year's election. Key thing, how are we gonna make sure that we get the information out to the voters that this system is happening? Um, we're gonna utilize basically every resource we have available, social media, main, you know, main media, we're gonna send flyers and stuff to people. I mean, is this gonna be an all-out blitz?
Absolutely. You know, we'll utilize social media, our local media. Uh, we can send a postcard to every registered voter. Uh, by the time next year rolls around, uh, property taxes will be going out long before the primary. I'll get with my other office holders at the courthouse. And we'll put a mailer out with your property tax bills or your reassessment. We're gonna double, triple, quadruple efforts to let everybody know.
I'm sure the water utility would be helpful in that as well.
Okay, that's another avenue there.
I would, I'll tell you, uh, when we attended the meeting, I was greatly impressed at how ease, the ease of being able to walk in, identify yourself, you know, get that slip of paper. I mean, it was in, out, and done. I mean, he had that whole thing set up in less than five minutes and it was up and functioning. And I mean, not only the ease of the poll workers, but you know, we even asked the questions about that, you know, and coming back, it's, it's essentially the same thing that communicates out there, communicates back with your office. And it's, it's like communicating with the bank electronically. It's like a twenty-four poll encryption key. I mean, and that's incredible. So we know that it's secure. That, that's the type of thing that we, we, you know, people look forward to because they worry about that, but you know, if you can do it with the bank, you could certainly do it here. And, uh, it was easy, it was great, and, uh, boy, it was just, it was awesome.
And most, well, I say most of you, most of you've been poll workers for me before in the last couple of years. And most precinct levels, you have two, maybe three voting machines. Each one of the vote centers, I intend to send out at least eight voting machines, at least for the first couple of election cycles. We'll have two of those e-poll books there. So I don't want anybody waiting more than fifteen minutes in line, and if they wait longer than that, we got a problem and I'll, I'll find a solution to it and fix it. But we'll be sending out more machines probably than what we need the first couple of years.
Have more staff there to help download, uh, the results at the end of the day, too?
We will probably have, uh, extra poll clerks, maybe like a double size of the staff, uh, maybe, well, there'll still only be one inspector.
Sure.
Um, you know how it works on election day. You can only, you know, walk people back and forth so fast to the machines.
Downloading of the machines at the end of the night is the only thing that causes a little time.
It's the printing of the zero tapes at the end is what takes a lot of time and hopefully, uh, yeah, I'm still saving up money with my non-inverting line item. I intend to purchase the fast printers that just zips it along and cuts fifteen minutes out of that process.
Dot matrix printer?
Yes.
Uh, one of the things too that we discussed at your last meeting was when you run into situations where people are waiting long, or if they come into the situation where it's like, well, you don't vote here, we don't, we can guess if that person's gonna come back and vote or go find the next polling place, but the odds are.
They get frustrated and leave.
And if you've been in that.
Drive across town. There's, everybody went once, ain't going.
And if you've been in that situation, it does get frustrating. I mean, I've explained to you, I ran in that situation a couple of years ago when they mistaken me for my father, when it's like, no, I'm Timothy Michael Salters, not Michael Salters.
Before I took office, right?
Yeah. So, uh, and they actually had to call the clerk's office and get clarification. I mean, I don't have the red hair like him. Um, but that can be frustrating and some people don't have the time to be able to wait for those things. Uh, this hopefully eliminates that issue where people, you know, obviously it eliminates that, this, you can come vote in any spot in Knox County, but the time that people might have, like I'm coming on a lunch break, or I'm coming before work, or I'm coming after work. That speed of being able to get people in and out, like those are two of the biggest issues that we see happening and this hopefully alleviates that, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
David, does all these voting centers communicate with each other?
Yes, they do. Uh, the e-poll book provider, uh, supplier, they provide us with MiFi's. If we don't have internet at the, uh, internet at the polling sites themselves, that's secure internet. So again, that's how you keep track. You can't go to one and then to another and vote twice on the same election. They are.
The internet that you might be using one of the places might go down?
Well, that's why we have the MiFi's. Everyone will have a MiFi. It's, it's either gonna be a primary or the MiFi is gonna be a redundant system for internet connectivity.
It's a MiFi.
Mm-hmm.
What is a MiFi?
What's a what?
MiFi, not Wi-Fi?
It's a MiFi through Verizon.
Okay.
And we can, uh, purchase a two-week contract, you know, two weeks in May, two weeks in November, so we're not paying a monthly service fee for the entire year. Um, again, I anticipate we'll have maybe half as many poll workers as we've needed in the past, which would save the county well over ten thousand dollars a year just there. Uh, related costs to e-poll books, you have, you know, your annual service and, and, uh, support, but it's like twenty-five hundred dollars a year for that, so. You know, there will be some cost savings. And the purchase of the e-poll books, we're one of seventeen counties in the state yet to adopt e-poll books, or we just adopted it. But the state has a few, uh, grant line items that they're wanting to close out and they're looking to fund, they're gonna fund us completely, so that's gonna save us about seventy-five thousand dollars initially right there. And there's no, no additional costs to go to a vote center after that. Your main cost, your only cost is the e-poll books. And like, uh, President Salter said, I'm here more like, you know, community outreach. Uh, the, the steps that will be followed to adopt a vote center system is, you know, have a working draft plan first, well, not first, I'm sorry, community outreach. So I officially have to go before the county council and the county commissioners. In the eyes of the state law, that's good enough for community outreach by gauging their approval or disapproval of the concept. Uh, both of those bodies, I just need a simple majority, does not have to be unanimous vote, to designate Knox County as a vote center system. After that, the board will come up with a draft plan, like I've already sent to you. That's a draft of a draft plan there. And again, it's a living, breathing thing. The county election board will then, you know, finalize what they call the draft plan, and we'll have a series of two different public hearings where any of y'all can come and, and say, you know, say their piece about whether they like it or they don't like it, but I want to take that a step further. It's why I'm here today. It's why I'll be probably up at the Bicknell in the near future and maybe even some of the smaller towns as well.
Uh, I, I think this is a big step. Um, and the key thing is, you know, if this is a route that we do go, I see us all as an outreach. All elected officials become a member of your kind of outreach group to be able to explain the process and explain how this will work and explain where people would go vote. Um, and if it's a, I, I think this is big and this is really good and it makes things, like I said earlier, it makes it simpler, it makes it easier, but then it keeps that security and safety, um, because this is one of the most important things that we do as citizens here, is we vote for our elected officials to represent us. So, um, I think this is a great plan and one of the things I do like about it is the flexibility that it gives. We can look and see, you know what, this worked well, here's some things that we can tune, and you kind of do that. When we discussed it with, uh, five or six other uh, county clerks that you had come down, that was kind of the key thing, like, we really like it and this is what we continue to do to improve it. So it, it's continually being improved on depending on the demographics of your county, depending on where the people are at, depending on what areas you see the most votes getting and, and where you need that support system. So I think this is a good first step. Um, I do appreciate you coming here and being able to explain to us, like I said, you didn't have to come here, but the key thing is making sure that we're all on the same page, um, as we move forward for this, because it makes things a whole lot easier when we're all on the same page.
Right.
Um, especially for something like this.
And if you crunch the numbers from, uh, Vincennes registered voters last year, you had, I can't remember the exact number, ninety-seven, ninety-eight hundred people voted in the last fall's election. Over half of them actually voted early, either in person or through the absentee mail, uh, mail voting. So they're pretty much already doing a vote center just during that early day, uh, period and they didn't really, didn't even really realize it. Any further questions? I'm gonna put you all on the spot then. Show of hands, who's in favor of a vote center for all of Knox County?
I didn't hear a motion, but.
That says unofficial. Did that get you too?
Yeah, it works and it makes it easy for everybody and it's.
You got us. Congratulations.
As long as it doesn't hinder anybody, good.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next is Rainbow Beach Update. Steve Beaman.
Steve, thanks for coming tonight. I just wanted to make sure that we're all kind of on the, kind of the theme of the, the same page as we move forward, because obviously this is, uh, a topic that's hot on everybody's mind and with things warming up, you guys are already hard at work getting stuff ready for the summer.
Uh, thank you. Uh, first of all, I just want to apologize. I don't know if, uh, this topic is as exciting as voting stations, but we will, we will try to do our best. Uh, the pool will be opening this year, uh, May twenty-ninth, which is a Saturday, is what we're shooting for. Unfortunately, a lot of our guards are high school kids and, uh, the twenty-eighth is graduation. Uh, we don't have a lot of free time like we usually do the week before to do some of the trainings that we would like to do. Uh, but our tentative date is the twenty-ninth. With worst case, we may have to open Memorial Day or Tuesday just so we can get enough guards, cause, uh, graduation has, um, graduation parties, uh, not only theirs, but their friends. So sometimes we, uh, have a hard time getting guards that day. Um, I want to step back. I want to thank Mayor Yocum. Uh, ever since last year, uh, as we got into March and April, talking about what we were gonna do uh, with the pool and, uh, we came to the decision of, uh, not opening it, uh, Mayor Yocum was, uh, we met all the time, uh, Paula, our secretary, uh, putting some, uh, her, uh, uh, experience in about, uh, what we should open or not. And, um, Mayor's been behind, uh, the parking wreck and the pool. I mean, the pool especially since day one, uh, six years ago, uh, when we did the referendum and all that work. Uh, so thanks to Mayor Yocum, uh, always being there for us in, in the Parks Department. But, so what our timeline right now is with the pool, uh, we've got the water turned on. We are, uh, probably gonna fill it mid-April. Uh, that's a little bit earlier than we normally do, but we want to have as much time as we can uh, with it up and going. Uh, obviously, this year is, uh, different than our normal years with Doug Roberts being gone. Doug had about thirteen years of dealing with the pools. And, uh, if you've got a home pool, I mean, you know, this is kind of a larger scale, but it's kind of a living and breathing thing. Uh, you kind of get to know, uh, what you need to do when this happens. I have all the confidence in, uh, J R Field, our maintenance director, to be able to handle that and myself getting involved more. We just hope patience, not only from, uh, this council, but from the city. Uh, obviously, we don't foresee any, uh, problems, but again, uh, doing this this year for the first time, uh, I mean, there could be things. Uh, right now, there's a couple pro, not problems, there's a couple of things that P S S, which is a company that, uh, built the pool, has come down and they have addressed. We have a couple more. Uh, there were things that we had on our radar with Doug that we wanted to do, that we were gonna do. Uh, the tubing, uh, that pumps the chlorine and the meratic acid and those type of things need replaced and I think one of the cat controllers needs, uh, a little updated. So just those, uh, small things, I mean, they kind of add up, but you know, those things that we wanted to do, we, we have to do. Uh, you know, by the book, you should be able to go in and just press the buttons and, and let it run. But, you know, what I said a while ago about there's things every day, if you have a large load one day, I mean, it's gonna throw off your pH. If it rains one night, you know, we have to go in and do, uh, those type of things. But, um, we've talked to Dr. Stewart and, uh, we've got a, uh, a COVID plan in place and, and we're doing it as if we were opening today. And, you know, we may make some changes as those times come, but just to give you, uh, an idea, uh, we've got signage made that we'll have all over, uh, in, out in front, but, uh, basically you can't get in the pool without a mask. Uh, we will have masks for sale, uh, for fifty cents. Um, the sign is what you've seen everywhere. If you have a temperature, cough, sore throat, um, shortness of breath, don't come in. Uh, the mask must be worn as you enter, go through the locker room, and then once you get out on deck, you can remove the mask. Anytime you go back to the restroom or to the concession stand, you have to have your mask on. What we will do is we're not gonna put any of our high school guards in a position where they have to enforce this to, uh, the patrons, because I think we've seen how some people react when, uh, asked nicely to, uh, wear a mask and things. So that is what I will do. Tim Hutchison, who was our pool manager the last seven years, uh, that will be up to us. So we hope that a week, two-week grace period that people will understand. You know, I hate to be the bad guy and not let people in or kick people out, but I mean, this is, you know, one of the most important things that we'll do. It's not just the safety of the people in there, but it's those high school kids. They're our concern and we want to make sure that they're in an environment that they feel safe and their parents feel safe. Um, we've looked at the concession stand and, uh, you know, kind of, uh, slimmed down some of our, uh, items. Uh, obviously inside there, they'll have to wear masks and gloves when they handle food. Uh, we're debating on whether to do the, uh, sneeze guard, like I call it. Uh, we, we may do, but if everyone's wearing a mask, we're kind of talking with Dr. Stewart about those things. From a cleaning standpoint, uh, we are going with, uh, SureClean and getting all of our disinfectant through them. I think they have a contract with the school system and, uh, so we're using the exact same thing that the school does. Uh, we will be cleaning the restrooms on a continual basis. Uh, wiping everything down like we normally do, and then we'll be using the disinfectant spray. It's got a sixty-second kill time. So what we'll do is, uh, which is gonna be difficult, but we can do it, stop people from coming in, spray everything down, wait a minute, and let people back in. We're also at this point looking to all the deck chairs that as they are emptied, I mean, not somebody going to the pool and coming back, but as they're emptied, we will go out, uh, spray those down, uh, put a small cone on after a minute, that deck chair is also available. Um, a lot of the stuff that we're doing is based on, uh, like Jasper, who had their pool open two years ago. Uh, they've been very kind in what worked for them and what didn't work. Uh, you know, the deck chairs, obviously last year, you know, six feet apart, all the deck chairs were, you couldn't scoot them together. Those things we're still looking at, uh, you know, when we get to, uh, June or May twenty-ninth, you know, it may be something that, that we don't do. But again, we're talking to Dr. Stewart and all this is fluid, uh, and it can change. Uh, also, uh, the concession stand will be, uh, cleaned, uh, continually. Uh, we'll have, I said, signs out everywhere. Uh, we're gonna make a YouTube video, uh, with a couple of our guards, uh, just showing coming in, wearing a mask, going to the chair, that different kind of things. Uh, our hours, we've not really nailed down. Typically, we're open ten to noon for tight time and then twelve to seven. Uh, there may be a small reduction. Uh, we had even kicked around of closing one day, uh, just to maybe, uh, do a super clean uh, or just give a break, but, um, we really don't know. Again, been talking to, uh, uh, to the mayor and we're kind of deciding on how we want to approach that. Um, but we're really excited. Uh, I know uh, we've had a lot of calls already about buying pool passes and, and things like that. Um, we will get the word out as much as we possibly can through social media and through the press about, again, you know, bring a mask, wear a mask, uh, work with us, uh, don't make a scene, don't get us in those situations uh, where, you know, you'll be on a viral video somewhere on Facebook. Uh, Jasper said they only had a maybe two or three uh, uh, times that somebody got, one, they had to call the police, so hopefully, chief, we won't be, uh, having you come down taking somebody. Uh, if you have any questions, but that's kind of it in a nutshell. Again, we're gonna be, start opening in probably two weeks, getting the water filled. P S S is coming down to do some of those repairs. Uh, and then, you know, that'll give us a good month and a half of water being in it and being able to, uh, do, uh, the cleaning and running the chemicals and, uh, I mean, get a pretty good hands-on before we open up in May twenty-ninth.
And, and to kind of clarify too, to talk about the spray stuff, because we use that at schools all the time, and the stuff dries real quick.
Yeah, it's something.
And then when you see the system work, like at first, that was a question that we had at the schools, like our handles gonna be, you know, our desk gonna be wet.
Yeah, I talked to Tony Meadows quite a bit about what you use.
It's just a quick glaze over and you're right. It's about a minute and it's right. It's just a quick glaze over and you're right. It's about a minute and it's ready to go. So it's quick, it's efficient, it's worked well for us in the schools. Um, so I see this working.
Well, the best part is the kill time of only sixty seconds. I mean, there's others, but this kills the coronavirus and a couple of other things and it's got the shortest kill time. So that was, uh, very appealing to us also.
Yeah, and it's a simple spray. It goes on smooth. Like I said, we've used it all year in the school corporation and it's been very beneficial for us. Allows us to get into rooms or areas quickly, get in, get out, get a good clean. Um, and this'll definitely benefit us at the pool. So that is a huge positive.
Hey, so, additional.
Go ahead.
The city uses this in all of our facilities.
Yeah.
The fire stations are sprayed every morning with the same.
And Bryce's guys have it.
Bryce.
We won't get the fog or anything because we can spray with the bottle and, and control. We're only open for three months. Uh, the fog is like fifteen hundred dollars. But we feel that we can wipe everything down and spray everything, uh, just with the spray bottles.
So mayor, any additional expense? Uh, this could be done out of CARES money, is that right?
I'm sure.
Yeah, I, I was gonna ask about.
It's really not, I'll be honest, it's not that expensive.
Good.
No, it's not really.
One of the questions I was gonna ask though is about our guards. Uh, actually, I mean, if you saw where I work and other places that work in, in these heavy environments that require extra work, um, are we paying them more? Is there gonna be hazard pay essentially for our guards this year and, and would that help with retention?
You know, that's always something as we get forward, but I don't think we can do hazard pay for, they deserve it, but you're giving hazard pay to, I mean, everybody. We, we want them to come and work for us. We want them to be, feel safe. Uh, our budget right now does not have an increase, but it's something that we're looking to address. I think next summer, the mayor and I have talked about that also. Uh, you know, times have changed where jobs, you can get eleven dollars an hour, ten dollars, ten dollars an hour at McDonald's and things. So, but what we've typically found is the people that come to be lifeguards, want to be lifeguards, you have to go through a three-day certification. It costs money for them to even do it. Uh, it's one of those things that's good down the road. If they go to college or if they wanna work at the Y or VU, uh, it gives them multiple areas, not just here, but when they go away to get some part-time work. And they can get as many hours as they want, uh, with hours that we're open and, you know, kids, some wanna work a lot and some wanna work six hours in a week. So we try to accommodate everybody with that.
Are we still looking for lifeguards or what are our numbers so far? Are they pretty good?
We always need lifeguards. I think we're up to thirty-five roughly. Um, we need thirteen on deck would be a great number with the COVID. Uh, we've got, I think, depending on how we, uh, we put people, we could have ten to thirteen at spots. Uh, if it's a slow day, you can put one on top of the slide to watch both slides and one at the bottom. Um, you don't have to have the guy at the bottom measuring, the one at the top can, but those are in slow days. But typically we'll have two or three in the, uh, activity pool, uh, one in the dive well, two or three in the lap pool. Uh, one up, two up on top, two down on the bottom on the slide and one on the chair. Uh, but this year we need to have, uh, continual rotation of the guards, taking breaks. We also need, uh, the head guards to do more patrolling. And not that they didn't before, but I mean, there's just so much going on now with the, uh, COVID. Uh, so it would be nice to have about five or ten more. Uh, we have this every year. Some kids don't have to work anymore or, or parents don't want them to work. Uh, you know, we've got like probably all the swim team kids, uh, are lifeguards, so that, that's a good pull. But, um, yeah, we're always putting stuff out. Uh, matter of fact, a couple of the girls that did lifeguarding last year made a TikTok about, three weeks ago, about being a lifeguard and, and things like that. So, I mean, they're coming in.
Hey Steve, is, are the guards gonna wear masks the whole time?
No, we've talked to Jasper and, uh, just when they're in communication with somebody in a face-to-face, if a mother or a father comes up, the guards will have, uh, masks on them. But there shouldn't be any reason why you can't have a six-foot, uh, you know, distance. Now, when they go into, uh, break, uh, they have to have their mask on in, inside the guard, uh, uh, break room and, uh, the concession stand, obviously. So, uh, you know, that was something that we battled with last year if we were gonna open of, you know, wearing masks. But, uh, Jasper kinda did the same thing. They said when they were open, uh, I mean, it was very doable. So no, someone's not gonna have tan lines of, of a mask.
Good. Um, I guess the next, like, and this is kind of smaller, um, splash pad scenario, we're gonna shut that off. We're not gonna have a section at Rainbow Beach that's going to be a free splash pad like we did last year because that was just a specific circumstance.
Yeah, it'll be open to the pool.
It'll be open specifically. I, I just wanna make sure.
And I don't know, the mayor and I have talked about that also.
We clarified that because obviously.
It worked really well, but.
Differently and we set the fencing up specifically for that, but that kinda goes in with the pool itself.
You know, the, uh, fence is a half-sized fence that, uh, on the inside of the pool.
Right.
That separates, uh, the pool deck and the, in the spray area, you know, maybe down the road. I mean, when we first built this, that was kind of our intention of say, alright, we can have a splash pad that's open from maybe August. Uh, but from what we built, we need to do a few more things, get a sidewalk over there and things like that. So we've just never done it. Having it with the pool is great. Uh, we had some issues again, you know, if we opened from, uh, seven to nine or something, have that open, uh, you'd have to have somebody there. And again, it's not things that we can't do. It just worked out better that we just had it with the pool. Uh, and plus we have the splash park at Four Lakes, uh, which is used quite a bit and, uh, people can, uh, use that one and.
It's cold, but.
How are repairs on the splash pad going?
Uh, everything. All we had was, I think the bat, uh, has four anchor bolts and one of them, uh, had been bent from the wind.
Oh, I mean, at the pool, there's a, it's dug out.
Oh, that is what they're coming back. Uh, we had a leak last summer when we had opened, uh, just for that month. And, uh, so PSS came down, uh, we, uh, dug it out, uh, they came in and listened and, uh, we found the leak. They patched it, uh, they left it uncovered. So, because it was pretty cold when we were out there in December. So they're gonna come in the next week or two weeks. We're in contact with them. They have a busy schedule. They build pools all over the Midwest and the East Coast. If they can come in, we're gonna get that po- or fix. We're gonna have a local, uh, concrete guy do the concrete. That'll save us. And then the work inside that I mentioned of the tubing and the cat controller and just different things like that.
Any special protection steps being taken for the splash park at Four Lakes?
We spray that and the restrooms last year with kind of the, the same chemical or disinfectant. Uh, but again, there, it's more of a, um, distance thing than it is anything else. Uh, you know, that one over there is kinda hard. Uh, I think last year we had signage up and, uh, most people paid attention. Uh, so the kids running through and, uh, the parents that gather, just like the pickleball court. Pickleball courts, or pickleball is a great way to play with distancing, but when you're not playing and you're gathering groups, that's where, uh, you know, we get in trouble. So, I mean, we're trying to do everything that we can. Um, again, a lot of it depends on, uh, the people meeting us halfway. And, uh, we feel confident and Dr. Stewart feels confident that we can operate this, uh, very successfully this year and get people back to some form of normalcy by having the pool open.
And I don't think anything is too outrageous in the safety plan that you proposed, Steve. I mean, I, people want to see the pool open and they're gonna be willing to follow those things. Because I think one of the biggest things that we heard last year is that's one of the biggest things that people missed from last year. And being able to open it obviously is not just a priority for you, your staff, the mayor, but for us here as a council, I mean, this is priority number one for us to make sure that this is open. So, um, know that whatever you need, if anything comes up, that we are ready and willing to support that to make sure that this goes through because it's that important to the community. I mean, I can think back to six years ago, this community overwhelmingly voted, uh, to have this new facility built. Because having a pool in the city of Vincennes was extremely important.
Yes, very much so. Thanks Steve.
Thank you, mayor.
Thanks Steve.
Next is claims.
Uh, make a motion to pay claims in the amount of one hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars. Exactly.
No sense.
No sense.
Okay, real quick. The number we have on this doesn't match the number I've got with mine, half of the reason. It's actually off like ten thousand, five hundred cents, five dollars and thirty-four cents.
Uh-oh. I'm gonna make a motion to pay the real amount.
I don't know, I have no way. I'm assuming that's the real amount missing this fact. So is yours higher?
Is yours higher or lower?
Lower than that.
Alright, I would assume that ours would be right and wouldn't you? I, I.
So for the m- for the regular docket, she has on here, um, one hundred eighty-seven thousand, five fifty-five.
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six plus in your credit cards.
Ten thousand, I think.
Ten thousand, five seventy-five, thirty-four.
That is the amount that.
So one ninety-eight, one thirty-one.
So that's the, that, so the credit card and one's the eight.
So it's the credit card, because the credit cards have to be, we have to run those separate.
Right, so the amount that I said was the right, it was the correct amount?
One ninety-eight, one thirty-one.
Yep.
Yeah, um, because it's the credit cards and then the regular, yeah.
Okay, got a motion by President Salter, saying by Vice President Grove, to pay claims in an amount of one hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars.
Councilman Relevat.
Did you second?
Yeah, he got it.
Yes, yes.
Councilman Gornau.
Yes.
Vice President Grove.
Yes.
Councilman Lau.
Yes.
Councilman McNeese.
Yes.
President Salters.
Yes.
And Councilman Stengel.
Yes.
And by vote of seven to zero, the times are paid. Move to miscellaneous.
That's usually our cleanup.
Under miscellaneous, if you don't care.
Yeah.
Bob, uh, Chief Donovan dropped off the thing. It said Vincent's Police Department on our desk here. One of the things he said, we're two, we're still two officers short. The last two in the hiring withdrew, uh, during the last portion of the hiring process. Bob, can you give us some insight of what happened and are you confident that you should be able to find one of those next applicants?
That's a loaded question, sorry.
Part of the problem is we're not getting the numbers we used to get and that's not causing any problem at Vincennes, it's just across the country. We, eh, we started out with sixteen, only eleven decided, this is the last process, only eleven decided to go through the testing. Uh, on the physical agility test, I think we lost four or five. Anyway, it got down to the final exams. After all the exams and stuff, we only had six people left. Three of those didn't make the grade for interview. Uh, part of that problem is, uh, i- it's, it's a fine line between being highly educated and having a whole lot of common sense and, and communication skills. John can tell you that. Uh, we ended up with three for the, uh, the actual list. Immediately, the, the top applicant, uh, they promoted him at Toyota and gave him a raise, so he stayed there. Uh, one of the three did not pass the final background portion. Uh, and then the one, the last one we had, it was going for the final steps, which would be the pension, physical and psychological testing the night before he withdrew. Why? I mean, you just don't know. Uh, but, uh, we're up to nine applicants again now. Uh, we will probably start mid-April with the testing again, uh, and, uh, I can't say that I'm confident, but you, you only hope that we get the best. The applications that I've gotten, uh, they look real good.
Chief, what does being down two officers do to overtime and, and just, how does that affect your staffing?
We've, we've gotten real good at switching people's days off and this and that, especially going through the COVID. So that's not a major factor, but if I lose another one, and that's what worries me, I have at least four officers that could retire at any given time if they found another place to go to. So we could be to seven, uh, as far as being short any day. The mayor and I have got some things that we're talking about, maybe making it look a little more appetizing to come to the police department with an application. Uh, and I, I can tell you that part of it is, uh, a hiring bonus or a moving bonus. Uh, with the funds that are already available in our line for shortage in salaries, we just have to get with the city attorney and find out how to, to control that. Uh, and then maybe put together a contract for three years that if they leave prior to that three-year period, they pay back the, the, the bonus. So, I mean, we've got, we've gotta get them to the process and through it. Because the city of Vincennes, uh, you know, across the board with other police departments, not too bad as far as salary with the community our size and, and the vehicles and, and the, the toys that, you know, we, we, we deal with, basically. That is what they look for. So it's just, we gotta get past this negativity of law enforcement a- and, and get them back to the, the application process.
Okay.
I like those days when we had eighty, ninety people apply, right?
Huh, I think there was like a hundred and fifty when I applied back in eighty-five, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Uh, a couple of cleanup items too. Uh, you all should have a Wall Bash Valley Connect, um, kinda two, uh, folders. They're gonna start sending those out and promoting that, uh, more and more. Uh, the mayor and I got a quick look at it and I've been kinda paying attention to it. Um, Mark Hill will be here with a couple of other people, uh, either at our first meeting in April or second meeting in April and they'll kinda explain that. We'll see if we can't get the computer hooked up for that so they can kinda scan and show you what it looks like. Uh, because it's a really, uh, good site that is easy to, uh, get to, find what you need. I mean, we looked through food pantries real quick. You could look through vehicles and transportation and, you know, clothing help and those kinda things that, the things that our community would need. So, um, just a click of the button, pretty simple on, uh, online, very simple on a phone. Um, and it's, gives you the information, it updates it constantly. Um, we're not the ones that are continually updating the information. We've got people that are doing that. And the key thing is, the more that you use this, the better it understands your community. Um, so it continually improves itself. So they'll be here to go over that. Um, and I think that we're probably gonna partner with them to, um, help keep this going for the community. But they'll talk about that more in depth as we move forward. Um, and then also, um, rendezvous news from the Board of Works. They've got their plan, they're meeting this week with Dr. Stewart to kinda go over that and they're gonna promote that. Um, I've given Councilman Grove a document to look over for, uh, making sure that we, uh, sponsor them. I know the mayor's office does that. But obviously this is about the big event in Vincennes. Um, and this is gonna be the first big, big event that comes back to town. So, um, I think we're all excited about that. We wanna see this be extremely successful and prove that we can have these big type of events, uh, safely and successfully. So I'm really kinda looking forward to that. So that's what I've got to clean up in miscellaneous today.
Anything else? Not, we'll go to public comment. Public comment, go for the good of the order.
Alright, uh, Councilman Grove.
Uh, I don't know if anybody noticed, driving down Main Street yesterday was very busy down there. They had the, uh, bridal shower, um, down on Main Street at the Grand Bank, but all, it looked like a really good turnout. That was good to see in our area.
Yeah, I mean, it was pretty busy. I was at church and it was pretty crowded. Had to keep the kids from running across the street, cars.
No.
They think that they own Main Street sadly. Alright, uh, District Two.
Uh, gonna, gonna piggyback on parking wrecks. Uh, I was going through, uh, uh, the area in the, uh, district. And I saw that the, uh, maintenance garage was open for the parks and rec and I stopped in and talked to JR and one of the guys, and they're out, shout out to them, because they're out, they're out painting picnic tables and replacing picnic tables and working on those and getting them ready for the parks. And also they said that the, uh, three spray s- uh, stations, one in Chicago Park, one in Greg Park, uh, they're all gonna be functioning this year. They, uh, thought that someone retired and didn't get a, some parts ordered, but I, that was encouraging. They're gonna have those, uh, uh, working this year in lieu of, uh, a splash pad. It's the next best thing, I guess. And, uh, shout out to our, um, police and fire rescue, the, uh, over at Lowe's. Unfortunately, a lady got caught in the drain. Uh, so quickly have skilled professionals to help in situations like that. You usually see that on national news, not on our news, but glad she's safe and we have experts to, uh, that are talented to get, get them out. That's it.
Alright, Councilman Stengel.
Thank you, Ms. Salters. Um, District Three is, uh, copacetic. Uh, nothing new or interesting to talk about. Uh, nothing happening in District Three right now. But I enjoy, uh, reading Sun Commercial and there was a story in there that I really enjoyed reading. It was, uh, where the, uh, local leaders of Washington, Indiana and Davies County was impressed with how many new businesses that Vincennes was getting. And, um, and there's a lot of great things happening in Vincennes, but these new businesses are really a shot in the arm. are really a shot in the arm. And, um, Vincent's is kind of becoming a, a, uh, community, uh, uh, leading community among communities in this area, and, um, I think we're just doing things right. Thank you.
I'd agree. It was a very good article to have in our paper. Uh, Councilman Ravellette, usually I got the big news in District Four.
Uh, yeah.
Is it tomorrow?
No, Thursday.
Oh.
The long-awaited opening of Marshall's.
Yeah.
Be on Thursday. And the, uh, opening, uh, I Heart Ice Cream is opening for the season on Friday, so that's, be a long line there, I'm sure. That's it.
Those are good updates. You've always got, like, the best updates, District Four. Jealous. Uh, all right, District Five.
All right, well, I, I will tell you that, uh, uh, Sunday was a beautiful day, so, uh, out walking and, uh, visiting with neighbors and so forth, and, uh, I'll just, I, I tell you, it's, it's, it's good to see so many people out mulching, you know, getting flowers and things ready to go. And, uh, in fact, as I walked the corner and was walking the dog, I could smell the very first opportunities of people cutting grass. I don't know if it was a good thing, or if it made me cry a little bit, because I just thought about the long summer, but, uh, you know, as everybody gets out and gets going, you know, it was, it's just really nice to see that, uh, so many people, um, and I think our community does a great job of this. We've got so many good people out there that work very hard on their, on their yards and their businesses and so forth, and they, they're really putting forth an effort, and it just, you know, it, it makes moving to the community, as you drive down and you can see all these, these clean properties, it just, it makes moving to the community just one more thing, you know, to look at and just to know your, your neighbors care about what they're doing. So, uh, just kudos to, uh, the city of Vincent's and, and for its residents for getting out there and cleaning up and working hard.
Thank you, Councilman Lau. Councilman McNeese.
Uh, a few different things. Uh, events in our community are being planned. I, I, I admire those people for diving in and committing to those, uh, to those events. Music Fest is underway, planning for that. Rendezvous, obviously, Watermelon Festival, I don't know about the Fourth of July, that's, uh, the mayor and Cheryl, good luck with that. Uh, but, uh, the other thing that I wanna say is, if you've not walked the Riverwalk or Culberson Boulevard, uh, recently, uh, you will knows the Riverview Loft Apartments are, uh, have residents in them. Uh, and it's really kind of awesome to see people in and out of down there. And, uh, I do, uh, worry about the people on the second floor, they don't have a balcony yet, but, um, actually, if you can see that, but, uh, it is, it is nice to see residents down there, and it just kind of proves that, uh, putting residents in our downtown will help the business community, too. You're gonna see those expand as well. That's it.
All right. Um, public season started, um, and that's kind of a big thing for us, because that was, uh, last year, that was basically the one big thing that we were able to do as a community. Um, and it's nice to be able to see those kids get back out there. I know a lot of my stuff is focused on younger kids and high school kids. I mean, it's kind of my wheelhouse, is where I am most of the time, but see them out there, to see the coaches excited, uh, to have the kids be able to be outside. We've been really lucky to have the weather that we've had early on to be able to get kids out there, and not just at that younger level. You know, our softball team started, our baseball team started. They're all out and about, they're able to practice, they're able to practice safely, because we know outside's one of the safest places to be. Um, I think we're two weeks away from our softball starting, I think thirteen days away from our baseball season starting. Um, there's a lot of great and exciting things, and, and one of the big things, too, is you're gonna see a lot of, not just parents be able to go to these games, but grandparents who missed out on a lot of winter sports stuff, because with it being inside, you know, it wasn't, um, as safe conditions it can be, obviously with spiking cases, but where we're at as a county right now, uh, with the events that we're gonna be able to have outside, and you're gonna be able to have, you know, parents, grandparents, you know, secondary family members be able to go to these events that are extremely important for, you know, our younger kids, our middle-school age kids and our high school kids, and, and that's really important, uh, for our community. And to kind of hit on, uh, Riverwalk, I mean, it's, it's kind of a growing hotspot in our spot. I love to be able to go out there. I can let the kids just go and run, they can run as far as they want, and I can still see them. Um, and I could try to walk the new dog down there and, as best as I can, when she lets me walk her. But it's a beautiful spot, just to be able to go out there and just enjoy Vincent's, and, uh, like Councilman McNeese said, it was kind of neat. You already see grills and stuff on some of the balconies that are done, to see people coming in and out. Um, I mean, it's, it's nice to be able to see that come from where it was, as the old grain silos to now this beautiful property that you have, where people want to be a part of, and it really has changed kind of the dynamic, uh, right there on the Riverwalk on First Street, and you're gonna continue to see that. That connects right into the French Commons and all the updates there. I mean, if you've driven past Grouseland and that area, they are really, um, going full bore on those updates, and, uh, we're invested in that. Um, you know, that's very important to us. I mean, history's part of what we do, and, uh, to be able to see those updates, and I talked with, uh, Lisa Ice Jones on those things, and things are going really well, uh, when it comes to Grouseland, and that's kind of a fan favorite spot, um, for my family. Um, so things, I mean, you'd look at every corner of the city of Vincent's, I know I say this a lot, but there's something happening everywhere around Vincent's, and it's something to be proud of. Um, we just gotta keep promoting it, and, I mean, it's, it's a great time to be in the city of Vincent's. Mayor?
Um, with all the discussion about businesses opening up and doing better and getting out, you know, we can only, we commend the residents of Vincent's, because everybody following the simple rules of washing your hands, keeping your distance, wearing a face covering, and staying home if you're sick has made a difference in our numbers. It is now, if you're forty and older, you can get a shot. We encourage you to get the vaccine to keep our numbers getting better and better. Uh, as long as everybody works together, things turn out great, and that's why you see Vincent's, uh, the way it is today, is, with all the progress and this, everybody that commits to working together. And the other thing I have, and I know it's just the Chick-fil-A truck, they've contacted us. They've been to several communities, and they're coming to Vincent's, and this is part of their marketing research. Uh, so the twenty-ninth, ten-thirty to seven-thirty, the Chick-fil-A truck will be down on the Riverwalk. And, that's all I've got.
Good, still good.
Nothing else, we just need a motion to adjourn. Some of, we are adjourned.
Thank you, thank you. All right, guys, make sure you sign.
Hey, uh, Cammy. Uh, Cam, I wanna do the city-
No, I'm, I'm good.
Got trade level?
I'm good, I-
Just zoning out?
Sometimes, yeah, I, I, I post questions and I answer, and then I just gotta move forward.
Yeah, if you would, if you would.
So.
Does that drive you nuts, that you see it? I'm like, man, someone's just gonna open that door.
I started following, uh, some sort of conflict, or, damn.
No, 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 I was just, just talking, because I, I'm, I'm still, my, my one ear is plugged a little bit, so I, I just, so I-